Open Meetings Act is supposed to allow. Time and get a roll call. Recognition of public comment, President Grant's time to speak. Please rise from your seat and state your name to the Board of Education. There's a time limit, you may speak only one time and it must, and you must limit your comments to five minutes or less. If you're planning to speak about a personnel or student matter involving an individual, please understand that our policies require that such concerns initially be directed to the administration. For consideration. Board members will generally not respond to any questions if you ask. Or comments that you may have about individual staff members or students, you are cautioned that slanderous comments are not protected just because they are at a board meeting. Please remember that this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Board of Education, offensive language, personal attacks and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. Alright, do we have any public comments? Right. We will move on to reports, uh, elementary principal report.
Uh, yes, uh, we started. Go through some stuff, steering committee met earlier this week. We had our areas of what we're going to focus on, we got our action plan ready to go for our visitation in January. And we identified some goals down below. Writing, we're going to focus on writing this year, uh, teachers are doing the training and stuff, or hopefully get that implemented here come January fully. Uh, that's the one piece we're missing in our E L A data and English and stuff that's down, so we're going to focus on that. Uh, instructional practice guide, we're going to use that to go with the teachers when we observe them and stuff to help them where their weakness is and walkthroughs. We're going to work on teachers, maybe observing other teachers. And that shows that it helps other teachers getting structural ideas and stuff. And climate and culture on the elementary level, we're still going to work with the P B I S, we've been going to restorative practices. Um, that's one of our focuses this year, we're going to, uh, praise. In public and criticize in private, so make sure, you know, our students are not. You know, being called out in class and stuff and having a tough time getting back in the class, so that's one of our focuses. Character strong is a social emotional learning curriculum. We're going to start implementing that when we're next in service, which I think is the second. We just had a lot on our plate starting off, so we're just going to push that to their administrator days, attended that in July. Uh, it was great to meet a lot of new principals down there, Mr. Webster introduced me to a lot of. His connections and stuff, so it was good to have connections, went to the sped laws, that was interesting. A lot of new stuff there and I went to a lot of this instructional leader stuff and new principal stuff and, and learned a lot there. Professional development, like I said, the teachers are working on the writing, we've been working on that the last couple of weeks and. And today, so we had three days of it pretty much here in the last. Week, so they're working really hard at it, reading celebration went off really well, Jen Sandberg. Sets that up, she does a great job, we had thirty-three students qualify for that. And staffing, we got our para hired, Madison Smith. Former Southern alumni and really excited that she's going to be on the team with us.
Thank you. Okay, school principal report?
Alright, um. Don't want to repeat a bunch of what Jason said, but we did have a steering committee last week, it felt good to actually sit in a good steering committee meeting. Um, again, we have our external visit this year, so you guys should probably note that in January, I'm sure Brett will send that to you guys as well. Um, like Brett said, our big instructional goal this year, other than just preparing for an external visit. Is work around the I P G, which is the instructional practice guide, um. It leans more into strategy and, and. Research backed, backed instructional strategy, we've been doing that work on the high school last year, we had E S U come out, I. Did rounds with it as well, um, and targeted feedback around those strategies to teachers and then conference with them afterwards. Especially for math, so we had a lot of positive feedback from that, so I'm excited to continue that this year too, um. It's been a whirlwind of a week, new staff on Friday last week, all staff reported back yesterday, um. Adams Big and Trust and the United Methodist Church spoiled our team on Monday and we just want to shout them out, appreciate them. Key shifts for this year, if some of you were in my parent presentation, but. We did make the decision to switch to accumulative grading practice, so rather than running quarter one. Final quarter two final average for a semester grade, um, best practice really supports cumulative grading where it just runs from. The first day of semester one to the last day of semester one, um. That's how colleges grade as well, a majority of universities grade that way as well, and it's really a better picture of student mastery towards standards and that's what we want. Um, the finale, finality of a quarter grade is. One, difficult to defend, because when you talk about what a standard is, which we are required to teach Nebraska State standards. It really is, that standard should be mastered throughout the course, not the first week of the course. Throughout the course, so it gives us multiple opportunities for students to come back and show mastery, um. And they, if, if you have a, a really hard first quarter, the, to rebound from that is very, very hard, so then you lose kids in the second quarter. So unanimously, our team was behind us and thought it would be best practice for us for kids, so. We'll make that shift this year, you won't really, parents really won't notice on their end probably as much as we'll notice, um, but we won't run like. There will, the only big shift is there's not a quarter two honor roll or a quarter three honor roll, there's just a, or four, sorry, there's just a. Um, semester one and. Semester two, um. Renewed focus on punctuality, so we're really gonna. Dig our heels in with tardies, um, just a new system, kids cannot go into a classroom if they are at school past eight oh five without a pink pass from the office, this just. It all honestly helps me because it makes me have to see these kids that are consistently showing up tardy because they have to come to the office before they go to class. It also helps the practice be consistent, so one students or one teacher's not having them come in and then forgetting to mark them accordingly, but somebody else is doing it with fidelity. And that's hard to defend to kids, um, and then just academic integrity, so I talked tonight and I'll talk to students at length tomorrow about the use of A I. And the appropriateness of it and how we cannot do that, um, and the why behind that is, is I need them to flex those knowledge muscles, it's. It's not as much about the binge and purge information as it's learning how to be a critical thinker and be gritty and, and complete a complex task, so. First day of school tomorrow, I will present, um, I have Eric Hesser coming out from the Nebraska State Patrol, he's going to present on dangers of social media and the legality behind that. Um, Dr. McConnell is going to present to kids tomorrow's on, tomorrow on mental health and just inclusion practices, um. They're gonna do. Oh gosh, lock races, because that's new, I'm putting those back in the locker rooms, and then I have an activities handbook scavenger hunt that they are going to love. So, I'm excited for this year, it was good to see kids tonight.
Any questions? Superintendent report?
Alright. Uh, so, so first off, really, I mean, I really want to thank these two for my first couple of months here. Uh, just kind of building that connection with them and. Guiding me through, helping me, helping me, uh, get into this position, so just, I really want to thank them for everything so far, um, I hope that continues. Uh, facilities wise. Uh, summer projects are all finished, um. We did, we did a facility and grounds walk, uh, and the committee can discuss, we've got some of that on discussion items for later. Um, but we can, they can talk about some of the things we talked about, um. Transportation wise, uh. Our white vans that have been. Hot topic for a long time, we finally took those to Carney, they are going to Kansas City, maybe there now, um. We are hopefully. Going to have them back by next Wednesday, that's, that's the communication that we've had, and so we can go to Carney and pick those up on Wednesday. And they will be back, they will be. Re weighed and rated. For ten passengers and they will be, they'll be legal to be on the road, so. Uh, that's exciting, um. I have bus needs, and we had that on the agenda, we can talk about that as we get there. Um. Financially, uh, we got to set our tax asking hearing and our budget hearing at the end of the meeting tonight, so we, things we can't forget. Uh, as of right now, looking at the real growth and real property value based on the twenty twenty-four numbers, we're very close, but we are not going to go to the joint public hearing. So now, that can change, obviously, if valuations come back on August twentieth. And those numbers become different, uh, that can change, but as of right now, we're on the good side of not having to go, so. School updates, school starts tomorrow, um, I. I've been telling people this and I think they think I'm crazy, but I am so excited to see kids in this building. Because I want to see how the building works with staff teaching, I want to see. I want to see how it all comes together, we've had staff in the building and it's been fun to watch them getting around the building. But now I want to see it with kids and, and I want to see how the whole product works, so. Uh, I think people think I'm crazy, but I mean, sleep tonight might be a, might be a minute, so. Um. Another question I have, uh, you guys stream board meetings. Is that something we want to continue to do, I just, uh. There's no, we don't have to. Right, so there's nothing that tells us that we absolutely have to stream the board meetings, I just wanted to ask that question. Uh, I think you're fog, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but we just kind of think about it. And figure out if that's something we want to continue to do, or if we're like, oh, you know what, we, we can probably talk about it, yeah, how many people have to. Watch it, so, we, we. We do, there's probably one to two a month that watch it, and then there's like eight, eight to ten that go back throughout the month and rewatch it. So. It's a small number. Um. But I, that's, that's up to you guys, um, we can make that decision on the road, just kind of think about it. You don't have to make a decision tonight, but. You know, there are some things that, when we are. Talking financially, uh, so we're talking wages of classified staff. And we are live streaming and I have things put up here, you know, we set that in front of us just so, to protect other people. We don't really want that to be shared out. I mean, that's, that's a big one to me. So that's, that's kind of part of the reason I would, I would recommend us go away from it. But. I'll sure do and support whatever we decide is a group, right? So. Uh, legislation wise, there's nothing obviously out there right now. Uh, N A S B records, area membership workshop, uh, four thirty in North Platte, that is September, I didn't add the date on there, but that's September third, I have it down below. Uh, I just kind of want to know, shoot me an email if you want to go, uh, but Shad and Janet and Kyle, you all receive awards for leveling up, so you're going to get. Recognized at the meeting. Um, have you guys gone in the past?
Thanks, I did.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, I think they're really good, um, to go to and they have good breakout sessions and then they have a supper at the end, so. Um, I would say by the end of the week, if you, if you want to go. Or I mean, tonight, let me know, I can, I'll get you on the list and I'll just, I'll register you, so you're. Good to go.
The weekend.
You said September third?
September third, yeah, yeah, it's September third in North Platte. Okay, right. Who are that people we can?
We know some hot places. We could share.
Yeah, it, it, yes, it starts before sort of. You're in. Probably up to high school.
Yeah, it has been.
And you guys can just help me too, if you want to thank God. Right? Um. And these are just some, some days, uh, we did our R P A meetings down in Southwest, uh. Then I played in the Southwest Educators Golf Tournament and it was a four man scramble and my team of three won the tournament. We shot nine under, uh, so it was fun, uh, it was fun to go back, uh. Team Rich, you know, that's where I taught for seven years and played that force, so. Spent a lot of time out there when I was single. That changed. Um, fall sports competition will be here soon, the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, we get, we get all that stuff rolling. Um, or budget workshop with Carl at four P M on the twenty-seven. So I think we can be done by five thirty and get people to golf league, I think we'll, we'll get that done, so make sure that's on your calendars. But I'll keep. I'll keep reminding you. Um, and I have the area membership meeting, uh, I'll go to the region five meeting in Bridgeport and that's the same day as our next board meeting, so.
Done everything?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Any questions? Does anybody have board reports?
Do you want to go around, we've walked, you want to talk about, you haven't talked about it all or?
We walked the building, um, with R C and. He kind of pointed out any deficiencies or projects that we're working on. Ceiling tiles were a big thing and they would, yeah, we've had a good.
I mean, in the first thing.
Yeah, some big projects maybe coming up.
Hey, treasures report?
Uh, receipts are currently at a hundred and eleven percent, should be ninety-two. Spentures are currently at seventy-three, it should be a hundred.
Any questions on that? Alright, we'll move into the consent agenda, um, I need a motion to approve. The minutes of the July fifteenth regular board meeting.
So. Sorry.
First fly shed, something like that. You don't call? Well, I know, like something got messed up, so Eric says Mister Eric Turca, but then everybody else is normal.
I think that's fine.
It's totally throwing me off, I'm like. Mister Eric Turca?
Mister.
Yes.
So Tom Kelly?
Yes.
Randy Busher?
Yeah.
Pass Stevens?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, um, now I need approval of general fund bills. For four hundred sixty-three thousand six hundred fifty-eight and forty-six.
So moved.
This by Eric?
So.
We just. I probably should have done more, it was just too separate. Okay, who motion?
Eric.
Yeah, good question. Tom Kelly?
Yes.
Mister Eric?
Yes.
Chad Lannister?
Yes.
Kyle Stevenson?
Yes.
Brandon Fisher? Yes. Alright, now on to action items. I need a motion to approve the absence of Brandy Busher from the July fifteen. Regular board meeting.
So moved. Okay.
Uh, Tom Kelly?
Yes.
Eric Turca?
Yes.
Uh, Brandy Busher abstained. Chad Lannister?
Yes.
And Kyle Stevenson?
Yes.
Alright, uh, eleven D is H V A. Um, discuss. H V A company, we have some bids here for cleanings.
Yeah, so, we tabled this at the last meeting, um, you guys had asked me to go back and just kind of make them apples to apples. So all the bids in there, you'll see, have the two cleanings and the four filter changes. Um, we did follow back up with Mister D's. Uh, Mister D's has hired another person. Um, he assured us that if. He's working and we have an issue, we would become priority, he felt like he had enough equipment. Where whatever he was doing, if it was winter. He could ma- make the place warm, if it was summer, he could get back to whatever he was getting. So. That was a conversation that he had with R C and I in my office, um. The other interesting thing on his quote is a two-year quote, so that price that he gave us is for two years. Still. He's new and. Maybe not as big as some of the others, but. And where he's hired another, he's hired another person, I think he's trying to expand and where he gave us that. Word amount that we would be. We would be number one priority. I felt. Felt good about that. Uh. The other one obviously is, we already are using Langmeyer. Uh, for everything right now. So that's kind of the other direction if we went away from these that I would. You just stay with the same. So.
I'll make a motion to hire Mister D's for two-year contract at fourteen thousand seven eighty-six.
One second. Who do discussion?
Just in being news, my biggest fear. Yeah, now big building. It'd be, that's a lot of.
But what would the emergency situation be, you know, so if it's a dead a winner and something dies, we now have. Um, the computers got it all linked up, we can see the temperature alarms.
Well. Anderson and I walked into a gym that was.
Well, I know, I was here.
Yeah.
But I mean, now we've got that, our. Fixed, right, and that's going to be a pretty random, I mean, it's not like the whole building to me is going to go down at one time.
Right.
We're going to be able to keep things warm, ice from, that's half.
So, like on a weekend like that, for instance, is he?
Yeah, we, I said, what if it's Saturday morning and we got a youth basketball tournament, he said, you will have priority, he said, I will drop what I'm doing and I will come to you. That was. That was the conversation I had.
Now we get a right hook strike. Lose some multiple units again.
We might have to, they might have to call Langmeyer. Yeah, we got twenty of them, I mean, we're starting with the service contractor.
Right.
Please, you've got to hire somebody and that's.
How, how are they going to treat us with that? Well, when we.
Well, I'm sure.
No, he isn't for a service, but then we call him for a major.
I mean, then we don't pay.
And that's, yeah, I mean, yeah, so then, then do you use somebody else, I think, then you use somebody else, I think, that's how that, that's how that goes, I think this is. I mean, there's like.
Service contract.
Service contract, so we got to think that this is just the cleanings, this is the filters, this is the maintenance of it.
And I'm not disagreeing, I just don't want, you know, if we do have to replace multiple ones. We go back to get a bid, they're like, you dumped us.
Right, we're going to give you a quote for. Double of what and then we find. Like, there's other people, right, and like, and when you look around, you're like, you are now.
Yeah, everybody want your business again, yeah, and it's a.
They want, they want to get paid.
They want school government contracts.
Yeah.
If we're going to do them, I think we only want to do a year contract though. Because if we do have problems with them showing up, we don't want to be locked into it.
Well, I'd assume that we could always break. I mean, it's a two-year price quote, you know, we're not, we're not locked into doing business with them.
Yeah.
So this is a, a price quote, but when you actually go into a contract, you can say.
Yeah, I'll talk this over to him. Yeah.
Yeah, and it showed them, they all had. If I remember when I was reading, they all had like a fifteen percent discount on pars, excluding free on, they're all pretty. Consistent saying, cleaning the coils. Four filter changes, the way they build them out, rhythmized, but.
Try to get them as close to apple to apples as we could. So that we knew exactly what we wanted.
I'm not opposed to getting them a shot. But with the maintenance, I, it's a good point, like if something major happened, we could always.
I mean, it's a, you have three different contractors when it's staff, yeah.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, and we're done discussion, ready to vote? Shad?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes. Alright, uh, eleven C, activity bus?
Yeah, so we met in July with the, uh, transportation committee, uh. And kind of decided that. We've, we needed something else to help us. Uh. And so I. Went ahead and put these, the bids of the buses on there, uh. I, I personally, if, if this is me, I, I think that Cornhusker International. It's a, it's a white activities bus, it does have the, uh, two seats instead of the bench seat in it. Um. And. It's not going to be a charter bus by any means, it's going to look like a school bus, only white, and it will have, I mean, you can wrap it then. That would be my suggestion, the other, the other reason I put this on here and. We can make that, we don't have to make this decision tonight. But when we had our conversation, we talked about the Thomas bus that we bought two years ago. I believe we bought it for a hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and then we got quoted for the exact same bus. At two hundred and twenty-five thousand. So in a two-year time period. We're, we're talking fifty thousand dollar increase, uh, and so. If we're going to make a decision, if we need this other activity bus. I'd like it to happen. Sooner than later, or. We just kind of put that away. I realize there anything else that. From the transportation side that I missed. That you feel like I should.
Is there a difference in quality that you see difference in Thomas versus international versus?
The only thing I would say is Cornhuskers in North Platte. They can work on them, I've talked to area directors, they've had, if they have issues, they take it to North Platte to handle. Thomas, we've had to take it home on multiple times, York multiple times, finally got it fixed in North Platte after. Very interesting phone calls, but. I, I'm with Brett, if we're going to do something, I think I would lean towards that just for the fact of being able to fix them in North Platte. Their, their air conditioning unit is. International. Tied through the system versus two separate systems like we have right now. So. I, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Can you talk to Carl about this?
Yeah, I did, I, I visited with Carl today on the phone, um, he, he reassured me that we were good, now. We're meeting with Carl on the twenty-seventh, so if that's something we want to table till September. And have Carl come in and, and really help reassure us. Moving forward that we would be okay doing this, that's totally fine, I mean. I've been a superintendent for two months. Right, and so I'm not going to take any offense to that as like, well, you don't know what you're doing. I think it's, that, that's a smart decision. He's, he's who we hired to help with financial side too, so if that's, if that's a decision you guys wanted. To go with, I'm, that's fine.
Well, I also think we've needed something for a while and the longer we wait, the longer it takes to get one, that's also concerning. We could be looking at not having something distract school next year and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I think there, I think there are six months to a year is kind of what they, what they've told us, uh, so.
Cornhuskers pushing a year.
Yeah.
He, he said a year. So he said, shows up sooner, well, surprise, but. We're looking at a year.
So if you think September, I mean, your, your major activities don't get rolling until. Later, so. There's that too, so.
What are the thoughts on seat belts?
Uh, there are.
There's none on, not on the international, I don't think, I don't think any of these have seat belts.
I don't think any ever did.
At first. I. It's all that I see. I don't know, I, I kind of go back and forth, uh.
Because I thought we had the option for seat belts and ordered the Thomas with seat belts and I was kind of surprised when came without.
Yeah, I. I don't know, I, I think. The design of the bus is supposed to be safe, quote unquote, correct? Uh. The seatbelt gives you a little extra, uh, security and safety on the bus.
I would say from a driver's standpoint, what I've seen in the last year. Good luck keeping kids in seat belts. I have a hard enough time keeping kids sat and cooperating some days, seat belts is just one more thing where. I don't think you're ever going to get them to use.
Yeah, and I think, and that's just, I think that's training. I mean, I think, I think eventually, eventually we would, if that's what we, if that's what we did, then we would, we would train. Uh, so.
The only other caveat to that is we would not be able to use that bus for. Um. Lower L.
Second grade and lower.
Right, because we need booster seats for every single one.
We have seat belts.
If they have seat belts in them, they have to have booster seats. So like kindergarten, some of first grade. We would have to have booster seats for every single kid bus.
Just as in, yeah.
It's so silly.
That's a huge thing, but.
Right, one more thing, right. Somebody got to buy a bunch of booster seats. Mister Eric.
Have you been on a bus with seat belts or seen any, like anyone? Have you been on a bus with seat belts or seen any like anyone? Uh-uh, I don't know that I've ever been on one. I just didn't know.
All the buses when we got new buses in Osceola, they we got them without. Yeah, so I guess it comes down to if you wanna make a decision now or if you're gonna wait until after we have our our. Budget workshop in August on the twenty seventh.
Right, we have a motion.
I'm I'm motion to the table until after the budget workshop in twenty seven.
Second, I would feel much better.
Absolutely.
Motion by Carl, second by Tom.
Yep.
Okay, Kyle Stevenson.
Yes.
Tom Kelly.
Yes.
Randy Busher, yes, Shannon. Mister Eric.
Yes.
Eleven D um. Adult lunch prices.
Yeah, so these are just, uh, we're leaving breakfast the same at two seventy five. Uh, lunch is gonna go up. I think it's going up. Order if I remember right, five dollars. And that's set by. Yes, it's not.
It's kind of based on a formula of price of commodities and price that we get. And so, yeah, it's. Out of our hands.
It's given to us, so. Guys just have to prove it.
Much no proves. Don't no prices of two seventy five for breakfast and five dollars for lunch.
Second.
Tom.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Chad. You say, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Kyle.
Yes.
And Brady, yes. Okay, uh, eleven E eighty day inspection.
Uh, so I put this on here. This is new eighty day inspections that we have to do. Uh, once school starts, your vehicles have to go get inspected um every eighty days. Any kid that rides in them. Uh, we're just gonna use the the inland transportation and TNS repair for our inspection this week. That's just what we're gonna have to do. There was talk. Maxwell reached out to us and they looked at maybe wanting to hire an individual person to do these. Uh, I was very interested in that, but we were us and Maxwell were dealing with only schools involved in that and I I didn't know. He didn't have very much information cost wise and and but he did have an individual that he was he was wanting to use. The only thing that guy wouldn't have been able to do is. Hire rotation, I think was the only thing, right? There was this one thing that had to be tires.
It was. To pull the. Pull the tires off and do an inspection.
Right, and that was the only thing he couldn't do. I was really interested in that, but got no further information. We'll start school tomorrow. We're gonna have something, so we'll do this. For the year and then we'll hopefully be able to.
It's a new law or?
It is. It's that seventy nine, six oh two. Yeah, yeah. So this just came out. It came out and.
It is one of the new rollout.
Yeah.
And there's a whole bunch more coming, so.
So this is.
So it's just the first eighty days or every?
Yeah, every eight days. You have to.
Basically, the only thing changed is you guys have to approve who I can use. Before it was we could use anybody.
Yeah.
There's but now you guys have to approve. Who Brett and I can hire as our inspectors.
Yeah.
It's just one more step.
We've always done the inspection, but now, yeah, now they want the boards to make sure that we're doing the job too.
Make a motion to approve is presented.
Second.
Andy. Yes, Tom.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Cam.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Okay, eleven F um consider and discuss the refinishing of the gym floor, softing with a break.
So when the when the guys came out, this Pratt came out to finish the floor. I had RC ask him about refinishing it over Christmas. Um, with the amount of traffic that goes on those floors uh with the elementary kids and PE and then volleyball and then basketball. Just to put a quick over the top finish. Uh, just so it's ready for the rest of winter sports and then to get you through to the end of the school year. Some schools do it, some schools don't. I. I'm a basketball coach and I know how how beneficial it is to have that redone uh at Christmas, just the wear and tear of the floor. So. It's actually a lot cheaper than I thought it would be. Yeah.
You don't say that very often.
No, that's what I'm saying. When I opened this earlier today, I was like. Expecting.
I make a motion to approve the bid for this off gym refinishing.
Second.
Kyle.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Randy, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Can I just do that during that tour?
Recording.
Yeah.
All right, uh, eleven E. Copland Electrical Bid.
All right, so we asked, whoops. Okay, so I asked Tori to come in um. When. So in the in the past, you guys have had events that are taking place out here. People plug in cross plugs and have completely. Knocked out breakers and things like that. So Tori's gonna put in some new circuits out here for us, so the. The outlets are on their own circuit, so they're not popping breakers when that happens. In the. Home ec room. I also asked him to give me a quote to run a two twenty to plug a stove in. And then another outlet to put a a microwave in above like a a range microwave so we can vent out. What I understood was. The home ec room was. They were working in there, but then they had to they had to go somewhere else to cook to bring everything back to finish it. Uh, if we're going to have that class, and I apologize, it's FCS. It's not home ec anymore. I'm sorry. For that FCS class, um. If we're gonna do that and we're gonna have that as part of our curriculum, I feel like. We need to do that in a classroom. That's that's part of their experience. For for the class, so we need to offer that in the classroom, so it's not this. Moving all over the place and moving parts and trying to figure out when there's microwaves on carts in there and there's all kinds of stuff, so. I would just like to make that classroom more efficient. For kids' education.
Motion to approve the bid for Copland Electric.
Chad.
Yes.
Kyle.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Randy.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Um. So now we are discussing um. Policy change eleven H, so policy sixty thirty five athletic contest participation by sixth graders.
So this was what we discussed at the July board meeting. Uh, we talked about wanting to raise that number from twelve to fourteen. Um, to give ourselves the opportunity. If the issue comes about. To have sixth graders participate in team athletics. And so if this. If we decide to amend this policy and go from twelve to fourteen. That doesn't mean that sixth graders are going to automatically be thrown into volleyball or into basketball or. We would really think hard about football. Yeah, we would. We want the opportunity. If participation numbers are low. To then go ask the sixth graders to participate. We don't just want to throw kids in. We want to make it, it's going to be a very educated decision. It's going to, we'll do our due diligence. But. We knew at twelve, there was no way we could even make that educated decision. It was our hands were already tied. So we wanted to go from twelve to fourteen to give us that opportunity to have that conversation. And then. We would have further conversations with kids and with parents if need be down the road.
And we are sitting at fourteen rolls right now. Between seventh and eighth.
So. Fourteen, so it doesn't even it won't even even if we change it, cause it has to be fewer than.
Yeah, so I wouldn't.
Going to.
Don't policy unless we lost one at this point with the number of fourteen, if you guys are comfortable with that number.
It's still like twelve was too few. Uh, and I felt like fourteen was a better number for us.
Especially when you look at, we're talking enrollment, not participation. So that makes a big difference, especially if you have a class come in that doesn't have a lot of. You know, kids participating or they're participating in other things that aren't, you know, s- school sanction support. It helps me breathe easier knowing like if we had to, if it came down to either. We do, I I tap into policy or I look at my seventh and eighth graders and say. Sorry, you're not playing this year. Like I would much rather. You know, do that than take that opportunity from. Our kids, but.
So say you have fourteen enrolled that you have. Eight there. Participating in sports.
So, yeah, we we can't.
It's based upon enrollment.
Correct.
So that number needs to be a number that you guys are comfortable with based upon a enrollment.
So at that point. If that occurs, is it open? To any sixth grader whose parents are okay with them doing that to us? That's anybody. It's not.
It's not a tryout. It's.
Tryout. It's just this is now the number. So any sixth grader whose parents are okay with it can.
Mm-hmm, and at that point, I mean, let's say. This policy passes. And we get to a point where we're like, okay, Mister Webster and I really need to sit down and have this conversation like. After we make that decision, it would be a very transparent conversation with parents. And students about, you know, because there is implications on the school day and there there are different implications, you know, so I'd wanna make sure that they had all the information they needed to make the best decision for their child.
And and we've worked as an administrative team. To make sure that we had. A lot of teams worked on this, so if this if this needed to happen. We were prepared to not group to not take education away from sixth grade kids. Uh, so we. This has been. We we really worked hard on this uh just to make sure that we were prepared for this, so. Great, we got another girl in, you know, so that's a positive thing. And you can leave it at twelve. We don't have to.
That's it's.
Right, this is just this is just adding two more. That. If that number's below. The fourteen instead of below twelve, so you're talking like you'd have to be at eleven. To enact that.
And guys, that gave me like heart palpitations when we were writing that line to think, especially when you look at. Like a basketball and a wrestling season that overlap each other or like very competitive youth sports in both that direction for girls. I never wanna have to look at my seventh and eighth graders and take a season away from them because we don't have, you know.
Can it be written that fourteen or fewer? I I'm just.
You can change, well, you can change it to say fourteen. We can, so if you make the motion, you could change that motion to say I I. I was gonna say that it'd be. Fourteen and fewer, so or instead of fewer than, you could make that motion. Yes.
I don't know, there. There are groups that come through that you have fourteen kids total. But you have. Six, eight, maybe that are interested in activities. One kid gets hurt. Then now it's like, well, we have to. Right? Yeah, I see her kids all the time, so. Saw a couple over years, three year high kids coming in with asks and braces already today, so I remember I know you're down a couple. So.
Yeah, I think to some degree we have to do something, but.
I'd make a motion to approve it is presented the fourteen.
All second.
Any more discussion? Randy. Yes. Kyle.
Yeah.
Chad.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Eleven, my discussion of adding storage container.
Yeah, so this is something that was brought up during our during our walk. Um. We're really getting full on storage area inside the school. So the the idea of adding a storage container or a couple of storage containers. To the property to help alleviate maybe some of the extra desks and the extra tables that we have laying around. Uh, education's ebb and flow, right? So right now we're in that. We're getting away from desks and people are sitting in in comfy chairs of floors, but. I don't want to get rid of all that stuff for in ten years when all of a sudden desks come back here. I I mean, I I hate to do that. So the idea of. Putting a storage container. On the property and in my thought, there are two of them is. In that area, that lot that is. Over here on the north uh where it's fenced off. Um, sticking it back in the corner in the northwest corner where those fences meet. We talked to the homeowner. To the to the west. And and he was okay with it. We we also talked to the city and zoning purposes. We have to, we would have to lay a cement, a porous cement slab. For that container to sit on, cause it has to be anchored down. That's city code, so you have to do those things. The other thought was putting it over at the the track area and putting one out there. Cause then you could somehow incorporate moving some of the track and football equipment into it. So. In an ideal world. I I think I'd want to put a forty footer here. And a twenty footer there. But that's the perfect world. Uh, so it it's just just a discussion item. I mean, there's we're not making any motions on it tonight. Um.
I don't love the idea. Of putting just like something like that on that property. I I feel like when we purchased that property, the. Intent was is that we put a nice building on that property and I think about just. What that means for our community and, you know, I I don't. Understand storage, I just. Personally, I I don't wanna start putting like containers on on a property that we kind of promised our community we'd put a nicer, and I realize we can't. Do that at this moment, but that was kind of. Because being on the board and we purchased that property, that was what we had discussed, but. Guess I'd have to wrap my head around it a little bit and just see and understand the neighbors, but then I just think about the rest of the community and what that perception is of. Us being teaching there versus. Think they're not.
I think it's a cost effective. Option, but I'm kinda like Randy. I don't. I don't. I hate storing stuff that we're not using. There's also we shouldn't be storing stuff, but I mean, it's.
I will say we were able to get rid of a lot of stuff when we brought out the.
Yeah, but I mean, if you go down to our storage, you know, where it's it's. The chairs and tables and desks, they take up so much room. They're so hard to store and that's where some of those containers might be useful. We get those nice buildings over by the track that are just kind of jammed full. I can't really use them anyway. That's why I don't store any of them. Yeah, so, yeah, I I just don't know if the community really want storage lockers out in front of her.
So. Do we look at? Finding a solution to put one over by the and just do one or siding it or something?
Oh, you got the art students.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't think it'd look any better than the.
No, I think it's not, so.
I think you can sell ads that you can put on the sides of those, like you could. You could have businesses uh to to donate, you know, their business logos on those two.
And are using.
Think it does give us some opportunity for some. Some of that. Recognition and publicity on that side too.
He is.
So is that something you want me to keep looking into? Do we wanna kind of just?
I think it'd be even for our next meeting, just get like what is the price of a cement slab? Like what is the price of the forty foot versus the twenty foot?
And I might.
Just discuss options of.
Is it with Jesse too about uh seeing if that's something that like one of his classes could do, could he could they pour a customer one on? Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll visit with him and see if that's something I can do. So, yeah, I'll I'll give that for September meeting.
Okay, uh, approval of board members who are absent.
So I put this on here just so we could start doing that at the board meetings when the board member is absent. So this will be upon every board agenda forever.
So do we approve Janet's absence now? Yes.
Then you get a motion to approve. In absence. In absence.
Removed.
Randy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, uh, next meeting date and time?
So we need to do tax asking, budget hearing, then regular. So we want to go six. Six oh five, six to ten.
Okay, with you?
Yeah.
I'll give you a nail six, six oh five.
So five, so that'll be. What day?
November eleventh.
September tenth.
September ninth.
Straight down instead of going sideways. September ninth.
They skip a couple of months.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should work. So our budget and stuff is the twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, then we'll have the.
Yes.
Six, 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 two.
We have to have a budget workshop in that motion also.
Um. We probably should set the budget workshop. That would be the twenty-seventh. That's at four P M.
So we need a moment to set the budget workshop, the twenty-seventh at four P M?
Yeah.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And then do we need a motion?
Uh.
Okay, Chad? Randy?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
So then we would need a, in motion. And I think we could do it all in one motion that the. Budget hearing is all on the same day. The budget. The tax asking would be at six o'clock. The budget hearing would be at six oh five. And then the regular board meeting would be at six. Or to follow five minutes after.
Does it need a motion?
As presented.
As presented.
Yes.
There's a second.
Sorry.
You're so happy that you're not secretary right now, aren't you?
I'm just happy it says missus. Even in the movie.
Have to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
So. Eric did it first. Chad did second. Okay, um. Oh, wait, four. September. Kyle?
What?
Eric?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes, Chad.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at eight oh eight. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, so then American Civics.
Civics committee.
Right on that.
Who is that? Is it?
Kyle.
Kyle.
Tom and you. And Eric, you go home.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You go.
Yeah.